Hey everybody, Robert Preston Jr. here. Live with Douglas Now.com. I told you we would go forward with a city commission wrap-up at 10:45, and I believe it is 10:45. If not, it's close enough. I always say that I don't want to spend a lot of time going over this kind of stuff, and I really don't want this time, but I'm not going to be able to go very long because the commission meeting nearly killed my battery. I only had about 18% left when the meeting ended. And I've tried to charge my battery in the time since the meeting, but I've gotten a bunch of phone calls. What I usually do is end up spending a good hour, an hour and 15 minutes after the meeting ends with various phone calls, so I don't get much of a chance to replenish my battery. So my battery is weak, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to speed things along here tonight. Of course, as I mentioned it earlier, I'm wearing my official Douglas City Commission t-shirt tonight courtesy of Beverly Kill's. They do not pay me for this, and I do buy my own shirts, but if you're interested, Johnny Depp and I are customers, if that makes any difference. Integrity word not found. We saw that again tonight from at least a couple of our commissioners. But before we get into the craziness that took place at the city commission meeting, let's actually talk about what the city did, what the commission did that took care of the city's business, because they did do a few things that took care of some matters before the commission. We went through a rather lengthy work session agenda, which yielded just four items on the consent agenda. I've explained to you guys before how the consent agenda works. So here were the four items that made it through the work session and on to the consent agenda. The commission voted to buy a couple of pieces of equipment, three pieces of equipment actually, a boom mower, which is a mower that has, as it says, a boom on it that allows the city to cut bushes and then ditches and things like that that you can't drive a regular mower. Expensive piece of equipment, $65,741.44. It was a budgeted item. They're gonna buy that under the state contract guidelines. What they're gonna do is take their old mower, sell it on Gov. Deals. It's for the Public Works Department. I did not get the name of the company that they're going to buy it from, but it is in South Dakota. Alright, but again, a budgeted item already been, already been planned for. The other piece of equipment, a caterpillar backhoe that they're gonna buy for the wastewater collections division, $92,000 and some change. Piece of equipment, gonna buy it from Yancey Brothers. What they're going to do, they're gonna buy this new backhoe for the wastewater division. They're going to take the old backhoe and move it to Public Works, and then take the loader that Public Works has been using and sell it on Gov. Deals. So they're going to buy a new one and then work the old ones down the line and eventually get rid of one older piece of equipment. Also gonna spend $38,000 buying three new fault gearboxes, buying those from a firm in Valdosta. So those were three of the four items that were on the consent agenda. The other item is one that they discuss annually, which is closing the College Park Drive through South Georgia State College for the South Georgia State College graduation. Probably close that, I guess, from about 7 o'clock in the morning. I want to say somewhere around noon, maybe a little bit after. But the date for that, and we will be discussing that, I'm quite sure, between now and the time they actually closed the road, is May the 8th of this year. So really from about 7 to noon on the 8th of May, again, something they do every year, they close College Park Drive while South Georgia State College celebrates its graduation. Hard to believe, they're already talking about graduations. We are, over a week into the month of March already. Times changed. I don't think the first day of spring is here, but for all practical purposes, spring is, uh, spring is in the air right now. And of course, the pollen is falling, and I can tell that because I'm sneezing every morning when I wake up. So we only had four items on the consent agenda, and we had 13 items that the commission discussed. There was a 14th item. That was general comments. Three individuals spoke during that time. So what else did we spend? We were in there for two and a half hours almost. Work session started at 6, went to about 7:30. We had a five-minute break between the work session and the regular meeting. Then the regular meeting started and ended about 20 minutes after 8, 8:25, somewhere in there. Enough, long enough that it almost killed my battery. So what did we talk about? What was, what was all the other stuff going on? Minutes. Ultimately, what we talked about was minutes. And this, again, was Commissioner Pearson. Now, there's always the approval of minutes at the beginning of the meeting. That's the first thing that the, that the commissioners do is approve the minutes from the previous meeting. So that was item number one of the work session. There were a couple of other, two other items related to the minutes on the work session agenda. Item nine, discuss the minutes from the February 10th, 2020 meeting. And then item 12, discuss the city clerk not retaining the audio from the February 10th, 2020 meeting. Commissioner Pearson's name was on both of those. So what was the big deal about the minutes from the 10th of February? Now, many of you watched that meeting. What happened at the very end of the meeting is that Commissioner Pearson wanted to talk about Roscoe Allen. Now, I happen to believe, like the majority of the commission believes, that there's no point in talking about Roscoe Allen if Roscoe is not at the meeting, and Roscoe cannot come to the meeting for about another 48 weeks or so, because there is a one-year restraining order preventing Mr. Allen from being within 500 yards of the mayor. So if the mayor's in the meeting, Roscoe can't be there. If Roscoe's not there, there's no point in talking about him. Now, Roscoe has had, we know the history Roscoe has with the city commission. So Commissioner Pearson wanted to talk about him. Why? Don't know. I guess it probably had something to do with the restraining order because it had just been handed down the week before, a few days before the 10th of February. So, but we didn't get to talk about it, so we don't really know what she wanted to discuss. At the end of the meeting, she wanted to bring this up, and the mayor said, "Miss Pearson, we really don't want to talk about that." And, uh, and Miss Pearson said, "Well, let's take a motion and see if we want to talk about it." So the mayor said, "Okay, let's make a motion. Who wants to talk about this?" Well, Commissioner Pearson made a motion, Commissioner Durham seconded it, and the mayor called for a vote, and they were the only two who voted in favor of it. So the motion died. There was no reason to move forward. So the mayor said, "We've got nothing else on the agenda. Let's, you know, let's, uh, let's adjourn." So the meeting adjourned. Now, what you gotta know about the minutes here, and what's, what's really funny in all this, what's really funny is that those of you who've watched the meetings know that Miss Pearson never reads the minutes. She has never been concerned with the minutes, not in the last year and a half. Now, I'm sure you could point to sometime in the past when there was some issue bothering her and she was paid attention to the minutes, but for the most part, she has not paid any attention to the minutes in the last year and a half. Now, all of a sudden, she's obsessed with the minutes, and I'm gonna tell you why. A lot of you figured it out. But the minutes are not a blow-by-blow, verbatim, play-by-play, uh, replay, reproduction, what have you, of the meetings, okay? They are synopses that are put together, supposed to put together as briefly as possible while still covering all the items of business that were discussed. I have been a secretary or a recorder on various different boards and what have you over the years. I've had to write minutes, okay? And you write the minutes as quickly and as efficiently as you possibly can. There was no word-by-word, verbatim replay of Commissioner Pearson's request to talk about Roscoe Allen reflected in the March 10th, excuse me, the February 10th meeting. That's what she wanted. She wanted it expressly stated in the minutes that she wanted to talk about a particular item, in this case, Mr. Allen, and the mayor did not want to. That's how she wanted it worded. The minutes themselves were not incorrect as they were written, but it was a synopsis. It was not explicitly stated. Commissioner Olivia Pearson wanted to talk about Roscoe Allen, the mayor wouldn't let her. And that's basically what she wanted in there. Now, think back to what happened on the 10th of February. What else happened in that meeting? Commissioner Pearson served the city with an anti-lite notice that she intended to sue. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. She plans to sue the city for one and a half million dollars for a variety of grievances, one of which is violation of her First Amendment rights. Alright? And as evidence that her First Amendment rights have been violated, she wants the minutes to reflect that she was not allowed to speak at the mayor's request. And she thinks that that will in some shape, form, or fashion help prove her case that her First Amendment rights have been infringed upon. As we've talked about, Miss Pearson's First Amendment rights have not at all been infringed upon. In fact, Commissioner Pearson did exactly what she wants to do in every meeting tonight. She held the meeting up. She stalled the progress of the board. The items on this agenda could have been discussed and handled in 20 minutes. Could have had a 20-minute work session. You could have had a 20-minute general meeting and been out of there before 7:30. We stayed there till almost 8:30. Okay? She did exactly what she wanted to do. She hijacked the meeting. She grandstanding. It was almost, is it grandstanding or grandstood? Who knows? Anyway, in all practical purposes, she created her own filibuster tonight and bogged the commission down for a significant amount of time. Not at all an infringement upon First Amendment rights, but since, but in the meeting, and since the meeting has ended, that's been her narrative, that the mayor is trying to silence her. And you can't silence her if you wanted to. Now, you might can keep her from talking about a few nonsensical items, okay, and a few things that aren't important and aren't valid, but you can't silence her. But what this is, the reason for the, for the, the fascination with the minutes, and a lot of you caught this because you made comments, and I tried to agree with you as much as I could. I don't see all the comments you make during a, during one of our live feeds, but I do see a lot of them. A lot of you accurately said that she wanted that information put in the minutes to help her lawsuit, and that's exactly what she wants. I mean, that's all it is. It's got nothing to do with being an official record of the meeting. It's got nothing to do with being, making sure that the city is compliant with its records-keeping or anything like that. It's much, much simpler than that and much more self-serving than that. The only reason she wants that in the minutes is because she thinks it will help her lawsuit. Her lawsuit's not going anywhere. Her lawsuit is going to fail, okay? Just like most lawsuits like this do fail. Now, not every time that the city gets sued does it fail. There have been times that suits have been brought against the city, and they have been perfectly valid suits that have resulted in some fairly substantial cash payouts, okay? That's happened. That's happened quite a bit. But in this particular case, it's not gonna happen because Commissioner Pearson's First Amendment rights have not been infringed upon. Now, so that was, that was the fascination with the minutes, and ultimately, they decided, and they took a vote. I mean, they carried this forward from the work session into the regular meeting. They discussed it away from the consent agenda, and they, uh, they ultimately took a vote on whether or not to change the minutes. And the vote passed four to two to not change the minutes. Now, the mayor didn't have to vote, but the mayor let his vote be known. Commissioner Bob Moore was not there tonight, so instead of having seven people on the board, there were only six. So there could conceivably be a tie, with no one there to break the tie. If the commission was not at three to three, there would be a tie. Of course, there's an odd number on the commission to keep that from ever happening, and the mayor usually doesn't vote. If there's no need for the mayor to vote, historically, the mayor, the mayor doesn't vote. But tonight, he did, and I think he did because he wanted it on the record how he felt, particularly with Commissioner Pearson, and to a degree, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Durham, very, very much on edge tonight. I think he wanted to make sure that people knew where he stood. Um, there was another issue related to Robert's Rules of Order. And, look, I'm not gonna go blow-by-blow with, with this, this minutes issue. There were motions that got changed and votes that got switched around and all kinds of craziness that went on. You know, if you want to go back and watch it, you can. But to some degree, there was some of this stuff. I know how the vote turned out, but I don't know exactly what happened in the meeting because it was extremely confusing. Now, the Robert's Rules of Order, what the mayor did with this, and this is, the reason I mentioned this is because Commissioner Pearson also said that this was an attempt to silence her and to infringe upon her First Amendment rights, and she has since made some Facebook posts in the time since the meeting ended that this particular measure, that what the mayor wanted to do was going to set people back, and I assume she meant people of color back, over 100 years by taking away their right to, uh, to express themselves, particularly in government meeting. Now, you've got a lot of ways you can look at this. If that's the prism through which you view the world, I can see why you would say that. However, that's not what's going on. What, there's a difference between silencing someone and running an orderly meeting. What the mayor did do tonight was introduce some guidelines to running an orderly meeting, and I had seen a copy of this before the meeting, so I know what was in there. The commission does 95 or so percent of this, maybe more than that. But, um, they don't all abide by it. Commissioner Pearson does not. And, and look, Commissioner Pearson is not going to abide by the rules, alright? In just about every position she's ever held, she has not played by the rules. So, if you put whoever's Rules of Orders in the, in, in place, she's not going to pay attention to them because that goes against what she is out to do on the council. Commissioner Pearson said that this, putting these Robert's Rules of Orders and bringing them before the committee, trying to get the commission to adopt them, was an attempt to silence her. Once again, she used the term dictatorship, that it was, he was making it, or attempting to create a dictatorship, violating her First Amendment rights, violating others. And she made the comment. She said that she will take action if the commission voted to approve these Rules of Orders. Now, Rules of Order, now, once again, I read them. And what they're there for is to run an orderly, efficient meeting. And I am all in for that. I learned when I worked for the Health Department way back when, that you run your meeting as quickly and efficiently as possible. In fact, you try to keep your meetings to an hour. You keep your meetings to an hour. You don't get sidetracked. You stay on task. Alright? You stay on task. That's not what Commissioner Pearson, and to a degree, Commissioner Durham, do in our meeting. Alright? And what the mayor's trying to do is to streamline the meeting process, probably, I don't know, 16, 18, 20 months or so ago, that I didn't like the end of the, the end of the, of the meeting when they allowed, I say they, the mayor allowed the commissioners to speak, and then he would speak too. Again, supposed to take three minutes. They talked about all kinds of crazy mess. It was pointless and senseless, and it did not occur. ...that stays on task and stays, alright, we're back with a connection. I'm sorry, we kind of, we kind of went out for a minute. I know we lost some viewers. I don't know what happened. Have not moved or done anything, but my, um, I had a, I had a bad connection for a second. But anyway, what these meet, what, what this particular agenda item did or wanted to do was simply establish an orderly meeting. Commissioner Pearson was against it. Commissioner Durham was against it. They did get a motion and a vote. It passed four to two, but Commissioner Pearson said, once again, if it did pass, that she was going to take other action because in her eyes, in her mind, this was an attempt to silence her. It's, it's not, and you know, I kind of think that, I don't know. Anyway, it wasn't an attempt to silence her. It's an attempt to have an orderly meeting. The show tonight, absolutely can't silence her if you wanted to. You can't silence her. Um, so what else did we discuss at the meeting? Uh, this was not an agenda item, but former state representative Chuck Sims came up and expressed some issues or some concerns that he had about the tax allocation. District Board approved that back in November. There is a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. Now, you have an opportunity, if you have some concerns about the TAD, to go to the Weir Center at 6:30 tomorrow. It's the big meeting we've been talking about since before the election with the city, the county, and the school board to finalize the TAD process. Now, the TAD has changed a little bit. The TAD has changed a little bit. Initially, we were going to, I say we, the city was going to do a bond option, um, where they were going to, to, to put some bonds out and then use bond money to build the TAD. Now, I'm oversimplifying this because to be quite honest with you, the TAD is a fairly complicated financial structure, and I don't completely understand everything that they do to, to make it happen, okay? It's been explained to me six ways to Sunday, and I still don't quite completely understand. I don't think anybody does. But basically, we were going to use bonds to build the TAD. Well, once it was approved, the county came to the table and said, "Look, we can leverage some resources we have. You're not gonna have to do a bond issue on it. We can self-finance the TAD." So instead of borrowing money on the open market through bonds, the county, as I understand it, if I'm wrong, somebody, please let me know, the county is going to finance the TAD. Brian, you're absolutely right. If I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm going to talk long enough to where you'll think I do before it's all over with, or I'll just ignore all the comments telling me I don't and continue to talk. No, I'm kidding. The county is going to fund the TAD. Now, Representative Sims had some concerns about that. One of the concerns he raised is people in the county didn't get to vote for the TAD, but now county money is going to pay for it. He didn't like that. He had a few other issues. To be quite honest, again, as we get down into the intricacies of this, I didn't completely understand everything that was being said and all of the concerns that were being expressed. However, the point here is that the voters have voted on it. The county, which was not really on board early on, is going to be a very important and a very supportive player in this, okay? And the school board, Brian, you can let me know if I'm right on this. The school board is there more to acknowledge the fact that, uh, it will be forfeiting some of its sales tax money to fund the TAD, okay? Because tell me if I'm right on this, Brian, if you're still watching. The school board does not collect any taxes, correct? The county collects the taxes for the school board, then gives it its allocation. So the school board's role here is basically acknowledging that it's going to be forfeiting some of its tax money, um, for the TAD. Can I sit next to you tomorrow, or are you gonna be at the, at the head table? I don't know who's gonna sit at the head table, but if you're not at the head table, I will absolutely sit by as long as you sit close because we've got to get the best audio we can. So anyway, Representative Sims, former Representative Sims, made, ah, property tax, not sales tax, got it. Um, Representative Sims addressed the commission during the work session. Now, there was a public hearing because of the funding changes with the TAD. They had to discuss and approve, and I'm reading this off the agenda, discuss and approve the amended redevelopment plan for the Tax Allocation District, okay? So they had the second reading and a public hearing. Couple of weeks ago, they had the first reading. Now they had the second reading of this amended redevelopment plan, and they had a public hearing. Now, Representative Sims had asked, uh, former Representative Sims had asked the commission if he could come back during the regular meeting and, and address the commission in the, in the real meeting. And Mayor Polk said, "No." You know, the agenda was set and they were already over time, so he said, "No." However, I found it interesting, uh, the former representative could have spoken during the public hearing. He could have gotten up, I believe, he could have gotten up and said the same thing at the, uh, during the public hearing for the, for the, for the TAD amendment that he did during the work session, but he chose not to. In fact, he left after the work session, but he had an opportunity to stand up and speak in the regular meeting. Um, so anyway, um, yeah, yeah, Jay White said that Chick-fil-A hasn't been on paper, something like that. What, another thing that he was saying is, you know, do we have contracts? Do we have guarantees that these stores are going to come, that Chick-fil-A is going to come, that Hobby Lobby and all these stores and restaurants and businesses that we've heard are coming are actually coming? Do we have that written in stone? And if we don't, are we putting this money out there and have them, you know, what happens if they don't show up? Then do the taxpayers have to pay back the money that has been put out there? I think, I think that's what he was saying. However, the developer was there tonight. I don't know how many people saw or noticed. He was sitting behind me, like, two rows behind me. Um, and he did not look concerned at all. The bottom line is, is that the TAD is going to happen, okay? It's going to happen. Going to have the meeting tomorrow, and they're gonna finalize everything. The idea, the whole time, has been to break ground, move dirt, start construction in March. They have the meeting tomorrow. They've got time to start doing that this month, and that's what's gonna happen. I mean, that's what's gonna happen. The voters voted overwhelmingly. The county's on board. The school board's on board. It's, it's going to, uh, it's going to happen, okay? And it's going to, and it's going to work out, I do believe. But what it did, see, because Commissioner Pearson's not in favor of the TAD, okay? She may say that she is, but she's not. I don't quite know where Commissioner Durham sits with the TAD, uh, but with emotions high tonight and everybody already on edge and getting laid in the work session, when former Representative Sims started speaking and making his comments, it got, um, what's the right word? What am I trying to say? It, it concerned Commissioners Durham and Pearson enough that they were not really in favor of doing anything on this public hearing that they had. And I need to check my notes to see how the, um, how that voted. It was a four to two vote to approve the, um, the amended TAD plan. Commissioner Durham and Commissioner Pearson voted against it. Everyone else voted yes, which is kind of weird because this is one of those things where Commissioner Pearson made an original, made the original motion to vote or to approve it. And then when they took a vote, Commissioner Pearson was the only one who voted no. And then the mayor looked at Commissioner Durham and said, "Did you mean to vote yes? You know, how, how do you vote?" And then he said, and I forget how he said it, but basically, he said that he really didn't want to vote in favor of it. And then he kind of said, "Well, we need to make another motion then because you just did." So they made another motion, and Commissioner Durham voted against it. It was, it was a bizarre meeting. It was absolutely bizarre meeting the whole time. Uh, there was also, and Uh, there was also an issue with regard to the minutes. The February the tenth meeting, the infamous February the tenth meeting ended up with the lost audio. Alright. The meetings are videoed. Johnny Wilkinson videos the meetings. But the city also records the audio of the meetings. And somehow, some way, and I, 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 I don't, I don't know how, I don't know what happened with it. But the February the tenth audio recording is not at City Hall. I don't know how they record it, if they use CDs, if they use tapes, if they use, you know, old school cassette tapes? If they use digital recorders? I don't know. Uh, but Commissioner Pearson, again, as she was upset about, on her end, the perceived inaccuracies of the February tenth meeting, she had asked about listening to the audio and City Clerk one at a boulder said that the audio was not there. And Commissioner Pearson wanted to discuss that tonight. And it was kind of funny because the, the city clerk, as Commissioner Pearson berated her about not having the audio, Commissioner Pearson, excuse me, City Clerk, said, where are we going with this? I don't have it. I'm sorry. I, I don't know where it is. I'm not sure what happened to it. Um, you know, what, 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 what do you want to do? And I think that what she was doing was saying, look, you know, if you want to try to get me in trouble, you want to try to get me written up or worse, then let me know what you're trying to gain out of this by, by mentioning this in the meeting. Now, nobody else seemed to be too terribly concerned that the audio was gone. I, I have not talked to the city manager about this. I have not talked to anybody else about it. Uh, well, one commissioner, and that commissioner didn't seem very alarmed about it either. One thing, I think in the tenth, there was one meeting that I counted, six people recording the meeting. Six people, six different cameras. Uh, Mr. Sutton was there with two devices. Uh, I think Jason Swinson was there with a device. There was Commissioner Pearson with a device, Jay White had a device, and I had a device, and George Ryan's, I, I, maybe, maybe Jason didn't have a device that night. But there were six devices recording the meeting and it could have been that meeting on the sixth. It may have been one in January, but there are always at least two people recording, not counting Mr. Wilkinson. So if anybody wants a copy or wants to see the February the tenth meeting, it's out there in several different places. Now, Commissioner Pearson implied in the meeting that Wynetta may have lost the audio on purpose. Uh, or someone else did something with it. So she seemed to, she implied that something nefarious happened to it. Now, I know the city clerk very well and once again, based on my dealings with her, she has always been professional and been conscientious. So I don't think that there was any sabotage here, but that's where Commissioner Pearson is going. But once, once again, this, this whole meeting revolved around the minutes. You take the minutes from the February tenth meeting out, this meeting lasted forty minutes. And, you know, we're out of there at seven thirty. But the fascination with the minutes has to do with the lawsuit that Commissioner Pearson plans on filing. She wants it in the minutes that the mayor would not let her talk about an issue, in this case, Roscoe Allen. So Jay White saying Jason did, Jason did have a, uh, did have a device recording for Commissioner Durham. I was thinking maybe he did. But there, there are several copies of this. If the audio is gone, you can see the meeting in a number of different places. So, anyway. That was, oh yes, the city commission also, this was not in the work session. This was in the regular meeting. The city commission also had the second reading, um, of the pawnbroker ordinance and adopted it. The first reading was on the twenty-fourth of February. It was approved unanimously. So unanimously, let me try that again. So if you are a pawnbroker or know someone who is, there is now a new ordinance in place overseeing the operations of pawn shops. That's pretty much the city commission meeting in a nutshell. A rather large, convoluted, very naughty nutshell, but a nutshell nonetheless. Think we're going to see more of this stuff moving forward. Because, you know, everything that goes on now is going to be geared for lining up with whatever litigation is forthcoming. So, um, this kind of stuff is going to continue and continue and continue as long as that's on the table. Now, I want to address something else real quickly. People are talking about what could you do to remove Commissioner Pearson? What about this? What about that? First of all, I don't like it even when elected officials don't act right. As long as they're not breaking the law. I don't like to hear people talk about removing people from office or getting a higher government authority involved to remove someone from office. I don't like it because I think you change leadership at the ballot box. You do it at the polls. The, the people who live in Commissioner Pearson's district had an opportunity to put a candidate out there before qualifying ended and did not do so. Now, the write-in candidate, Carla Grady, ran an incredible race and absolutely, I think, would have won at least fifty-five to forty-five, maybe sixty to forty, if she had been on the ballot. It would have been a no contest. No, a, a, a write-in, if a write-in candidate loses an election by twenty-some-odd votes, you put that name on the ballot, they win two to one. They win two to one, okay? However, people in Commissioner's district, Commissioner Pearson's district didn't do it. They didn't do it. So evidently, the individuals in Commissioner Pearson's district, her constituents, are happy enough with her to continue for another four years. Now, if they're not, this is something that's, and I, I don't know exactly how this works, kind of interesting. But there are guidelines in place to initiate a recall of an elected official. You can do that in Douglas and Coffee County. I want to say that in order to get the recall process started, it only takes a petition signed by ten, twelve, fourteen percent of the people who voted in the last election. If I remember right, Commissioner Pearson got two hundred and thirty-one votes and, or maybe two, no, two hundred and twenty-six votes. And Carla Grady got two hundred and five votes, I think is how that worked, some, something like that. So you're only looking at a few more than four hundred votes cast in that election. So in order to get a recall, the recall process started, it would only take somewhere between forty and fifty signatures on a petition for that to happen. I think you could probably find forty or fifty people in that, in that district who would sign such a petition. Now, what happens after the petition is signed and what it has to go through, I don't know. And I have not read this information myself. I am going by people who have read it, have told me, okay? And I've heard that from multiple sources. So either it's right or multiple sources read the same information and came to the same incorrect conclusion. But it would only take somewhere around forty, fifty signatures to start the recall process if somebody wanted to initiate that. Now, again, I don't, I don't like that. I think you do so at the ballot box. You know, I didn't like the impeachment because what, what the impeachment said is, when you, when you do something like that a year from out from the election, what you're saying is you're admitting defeat. You're looking at it saying, we, we can't win. We're not going to win in the next election. You know, because impeachment process just ended. It went on for several months. It started late summer, early fall, and it went well into the winter. You know, ten months or so away from the election, ten, eleven months from the election, maybe nine months. If you're going to go through the, through a process like that, that close to the election, you are admitting that you can't win at the polls. Now, if you do it now, it's a little bit different because you've got three and a half years, over three and a half years to the next election. And if someone is deemed damaging enough that they need to be removed from office that far out, that's another matter entirely. But I will say, you know, I've had people ask me and that's the truth, but I don't like it. I don't like it. I think you do it at the ballot box. You, that's how we, that's how we change leaders unless a law has been broken. And I have not seen Commissioner Pearson break the law in the commission meetings. I haven't, I haven't seen her do that. I think there are some issues sometimes when she's gotten very close to it and I think she's broken some laws in the past. But here now, I don't think, I haven't seen her break, uh, breaking laws, haven't seen her do anything criminal. So, you know, again, just being upset with her and not liking how she handles things. To me, I think you just deal with it. You know, you just deal with it and, 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 you know, things like not standing for the pledge, three meetings in a row, that kind of stuff is going to turn pu- public opinion against her more than it already is. So a lot, a lot going on. There were some other things. I saw somebody mention something about, uh, Minister Richardson and, and, and a few others. And I, I don't really want to get into all that. There was a lot. We could talk for another thirty minutes about the Citizens Advisory Council that was the Utilities Commission. That's what it started out as. They decided to, uh, instead of make it just a Utilities Commission, expand it to a Citizens Advisory Council that would discuss issues related to all city departments, not just utilities. There's still quite a bit of controversy about who is going to be on that commission. We're going to talk about that in the next meeting, so there'll be plenty of time to talk about that as well. But for the most part, I think these, you know, what we've talked about tonight are the highlights of the, in some cases, the lowlights of the commission meeting. One more thing, um, when we talked about those who qualified for elections last week, when qualifying in and we talked about the countywide elections, we didn't really get into the statewide stuff. Senator Tyler Harper does not have any opposition. Representative Dominic LaRica does. Someone qualified to run against him as a Democrat, um, in the, uh, in the November election. Michael Moore, who is either from Douglas or Willacoochee, I am not sure which one. Um, I believe all of Atkinson County is in Senator, uh, excuse me, is in Representative LaRica's district. So, um, I have seen in various places where Mr. Moore, uh, could be from Atkinson County, it could be from Coffee County. He has not sent us any type of release. We don't have any information about him. But he, he goes by, his nickname is Buckle. If you look him up on Facebook, Michael Buckle Moore, or maybe it's just Buckle Moore. Like belt buckle, B U C K L E. He is qualified to run against Representative LaRica. He will run on the Democratic ticket. So you won't see anything on that in the primary. Uh, you'll see a name on the ballot, but that's it. But that will be an election that will have to deal, uh, that, that, uh, that will have to cast a ballot for in November. And if you want to see some, some interesting reading, go to his Facebook page and see what his primary platform is. You'll get a kick out of it. Some of you will really, really like it, but you will absolutely get a kick out of it. Check it out. Maybe we can get a statement, maybe, uh, uh, maybe we can get a story on him here before too terribly long. It would make for some very, very interesting reading. With that, we are going to sign off. My battery's about to die anyway. Thank you guys for watching. Thank you for supporting what we do. Again, you know, I give you my opinion in this stuff. I also try to present the facts and, and then be as objective as possible, but I will also tell you what I think. And some people like it, some people don't. But, but I, I really think everything that happened tonight in the commission meeting is, is revolved around potential litigation that Commissioner Pearson plans to file against the city. And it, it, and it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to pass. Alright, because again, if you watched the meeting tonight and you were there and you saw everything that took place, if Commissioner Pearson says that her First Amendment rights have been violated, you cannot say that after what happened tonight because it was the Commissioner Pearson show from start to finish for almost two and a half hours. And the very things that she says that the mayor and others are trying to stop her from doing, she did tonight. So from not standing to the pla- uh, of the pledge, um, to basically filibustering most of the meeting, talking about the minutes. And again, the minutes, the issue with the minutes is to get it in there on the record that the mayor wouldn't let her talk about something which, you know, again, that issue didn't need to be talked about. So that's what's happened. I saw some people talking earlier about an accident out on one fifty-eight. I hope everybody's okay in that. Um, one fifty-eight's a busy road. People traveling at a high rate of speed. It must have been on the other end because I live not too far off of one fifty-eight and I did not hear any emergency vehicles tonight. So it must have been out there on the other end. Um, but, uh, again, we hope and pray everybody is okay in that. Once again, uh, those of you may have seen the story about our, uh, or about the, the, the car versus bicycle accident that took place on Friday. City police have said that they are going to start enforcing traffic laws regarding bicycles because in the span of about eight days, we had two accidents between cars and bicycles, one of which was fatal. So again, if you ride a bicycle, I think I would, it would behoove you to at least get some type of rudimentary understanding of, of, of the law. Basically, same laws apply to vehicles, apply to bicycles. Ride with traffic, not against it. You ride with traffic. You stop at stop signs. You stop at red lights. You know, you don't shoot through red lights. In both accidents, the bicyclist was, was at fault. And, and if the bicyclist had been obeying the traffic laws, they would not have been struck by a vehicle. So, anyway, if you don't ride a bike, you don't have to worry about that. But if you do ride a bike, you ride a bike in the city, uh, pretend that you're in a car and follow the same rules there. You don't have to wear a helmet though. There is not a mandatory helmet law unless you're under sixteen. If you're sixteen years of age or older, you do not have to wear a helmet. So, that's it. Thank you guys for watching. Thank you very much for, uh, again, for supporting what we do. We appreciate it. Thank you for hanging in there with us on a very, very long night. We'll see what happens moving forward. And of course, if anything else breaks through the rest of the week, we will be, we will be with you. I've got a pretty good week this week so far right now and I should be around. So if anything does happen, we should be able to get to it and take care of it. Thank you again for watching. Everybody have a great, great Monday night and a rain-free week, I hope. Maybe we can have us a dry week. Y'all have a great one. We'll see you next time.